Good evening, everyone. I'm going to call to order the Gray Town Council special meeting of August 28th, 2023. I'm going to start with roll call. Counselor McGuire.
Present.
Counselor Meany.
Present.
Counselor Height.
Here.
Counselor Gass.
Present.
And my, I'm Counselor Chapel. To my right is Town Manager Nate Rudy. This evening, we are going to give you a presentation of the changes to the FY24 budget that was not approved in June during the referendum. We've had a series of four or five workshops to go over revisions and make amendments totaling about $750,000 in changes from the original proposal. We're going to, before we open it up for public comment, Town Manager Rudy is just going to give a presentation of what those changes are so everyone can be on the same page and informed.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. I'm Nate Rudy, the Town Manager for Gray, and I would like to present for you this evening an updated revised budget that is the culmination of about five different town council meetings since the original budget proposal did not pass at the polls in June. This revised budget is the product of 20 meetings between the town council and town staff to identify current needs and strategic investments for a sustainably fiscally responsible future for the town and the taxpaying property owners. When considering this year's budget, one might consider these unique circumstances that made this year's budget different from most. The town is experiencing the cost effects of the COVID economy and our costs for goods and services. The town is experiencing COVID-related employee culture shifts that make recruitment and retention more challenging. The town's facilities need many years of deferred safety repairs and maintenance. Gray's human resources have also experienced many years of deferred wage maintenance at the same time that wages have gone up precipitously in the last year or two. And Gray's facilities have expanded to better serve Gray's sports teams and programs such as the New England Championship Little League baseball team that was celebrated this weekend. We have more fields to mow, more fields planned, and this year's budget includes funding for the new Little League fields to be placed at the Village Gateway property across the street. At the same time as that, however, the new begin gym roof leaks when it rains hard and water comes in when the rain's blowing in sideways into the building. Lastly, and notably, Gray's local economy and commercial tax base is solid but not yet robust enough to help balance the increasing carrying costs for local government. So the burden is largely shifted to and borne by residents. And we'd like to look at long-term economic development goals as part of this year's budget to help with that balance. So when considering this budget, I ask you to please think of town economics like your own home economics. We also try to keep costs down. We also try to limit extraneous expenses and get by with what we have. And that is fine. It's fine to say we can't afford everything we want, and we agree with that. And the town man, the town department heads would all agree with that, and you can see it in their budgets. But when your roof is leaking, and when your boilers are failing, and when your house has flooded, like happened recently here at town hall, it's hard to say we just have to cut. And so I'm going to present this budget to you as our best effort to balance those needs and goals. We work hard to maintain reasonable budget requests, but we can't defer maintenance and employee salary adjustments forever. There's never going to be a better time for doing something. And anything we put off this year, as you will see in the budget for the bond, projected bond cost for the panel projects, everything we've put off for this year will cost more to the town next year. I'll just get it where people want it, which is to talk about the mill rate projection. The revised proposed budget projection is approximately 1.15.81, excuse me. This is an approximation. It will not be final until the town assessor finishes her commitment and submits the tax commitment sheets to the main revenue service. It's, we're close, but it's not 100% done until the document is signed and mailed in. This is an increase of 1.23 mil over last year's 1.13.95. But notably, I want to just share with you that this is a .43 mil increase from two years ago when I came to work here. So over the course of the two and a half years that I've been here, mill rate's only gone up four tenths. There's been a dip, as you can see from the, as you can see from the chart there, we went down, we were pretty level, we went down a little bit, now we're going up a little bit. But if you look at the dotted line there, what that represents is a three-year trend. It averages out where things are over three years. Three-year trend line's flat, and I know that that doesn't change the fact that the mill rate went up this year more than people would like. But what it does do is show that perhaps, we hope, as property values continue to increase and as we continue to work on efforts to grow the economy, that in following years, the growth will keep, will match pace with the increase in our carrying costs, which are just like yours. Costs of toilet paper, costs of road salt, costs to get your driveway plowed. All of that goes up for us, just like it does for you. Historically, if you look at the percentage of total tax commitment, things are fairly level. We come in around 30%. Tiff District comes in around 4%, so we're maybe 34% here in Gray. School District comes in at 60, 62%. County comes in around 5%. So 65-plus percent of the budget in Gray is what goes into your tax commitment we have no control over. There is an increase from year to year. The budgets are getting larger. The schools' budget got larger by a million dollars. The town's budget got larger by a million dollars. County budget went up, but some of that is because they went to a different fiscal year, and they're giving us five years, they're splitting a year over five years for their budget. So that $125,000 is largely that makeup payment. It's not a giant increase in their costs this year. I have provided for you, and I apologize for the typographical error that I made, but Article 12 was not in the list. So I have renumbered the articles to correct Article 13 to Article 12, and all of the subsequent articles are remunerated also. You might notice that there's, they're purple, the numbers that were changed. I use that just to identify all the changes throughout all of the documents. So if you look on page three of the warrant articles, I'm going to ask council to make an amendment to the warrant articles that I proposed to you, just to clarify this clerical error, if nothing else. So this presentation is designed to track with the warrant articles, to give everybody a sense of what we're doing, because they're different this year. There's another document that I provided for you, which is the summary sheet of all of the department budgets, and then they're tabulated up into numbers that correspond with Article 2. You'll see a list of departments and budget amounts. Those figures correspond with that. And then there's another document that I provided for you, which is a line item list of all of the changes that the council has given to me since the last budget went to ballot. I rearranged all of this to put it in order so that it's easier for everyone to understand. I understood it, but like, you know, I'm sort of, you know, ridiculous. These are in line. Hopefully, they're easy enough to follow. I'd be happy to answer questions about the content of the budget during the public hearing segment, but if, if there's a technical issue or a clarity question about a document or about the presentation, not a lead-in to a question about the budget, please wave your hand at me, and I'd be happy to try to answer that. But please save budget questions for the council, and I'm happy to answer too. Okay, I want to step through the first few warrant articles. These are the ones that directly affect the mill rate. These affect the appropriation, the final dollar value that goes on the commitment sheet. There are other articles on here for other budget items that also are about money. They're also about the town's use of funds, but some of it is intragovernmental funds that are coming in from ARPA. Some of it is Tiff District Fund, which is counted separately from operating funds for the town. Article 2 is the General Fund, and that's the first document that I provided for you, the summary sheet. We've, we've made some reductions. You'll see the decreases both in amount and in percentage for various departments. And if you want to know where all of these came from, or if you're not attending this evening and want to track with the council's conversation, all of the video for all of their presentations is on the website. All of these documents will also be posted, already are posted, to the town website. So anyone can find, get the facts for yourself from the material that we're providing on the website, please. We've seen some fairly minor reductions across the board. One of the reductions is the general insurance line. This simply reflects the fact that we got the actual insurance bill instead of the proposed insurance bill largely, but there are some other changes in there also. Public safety, we made a cut there. We made several cuts that were just things that were going to happen anyway, and I'll try to illustrate those for you when we get to that part. But this was one of those items where the chief, in his discretion, decided, we really didn't need to do this, so we're not going to do it. And then there's, on the next page, we made some adjustments. We eliminated a position request. That's where the winter and summer roads deductions come from largely. Town Council made a change in their, ooh, sorry, in their budget, in the increase there to cover the cost of outreach about budgets to the public so as to not repeat this year's election issue the same next year. And then there's a change in law enforcement. We're not buying a vehicle from them this year that we had planned on because it's not available, because they're still driving it. And then there was a $19,000 cut to the community services for this local Gray Senior Property Tax Assistance Program, because the state has recently passed two property tax or two senior stabilization-type programs that do the same thing that Gray did a couple of years in advance. So Gray was proactive in meeting the needs of older people. The state has stepped in and matched and exceeded that program, and so the council felt there was no longer a need in this year's budget to fund that. Going down the page, on the next page, page three, I want to just point out Articles 3, 4, 5, and 6 are noted in the top-left corner. Article 3 of the warrant, excuse me, warrant articles is what you're used to seeing from capital budget. So that should be familiar. Article 4, 5, and 6 are on the recommendation of the town attorney. We pulled these budget items out of the capital fund budget, capital improvement budget, and put them in separate articles because we're moving monies directly out of unallocated or unassigned funds into special funds for the specific purposes. One of them is a capital reserve fund for, well, I'll get into that when we go further through this. And then, so you've got the total of the general fund expenses, the operating expenses for the town on Page 1 and 2. Page 3 are the capital expenses. And then at the bottom of Page 3, you see the total proposed budget minus the state's revenue sharing to the town. And what, at the bottom of that is a net adjusted appropriation for the town budget of $6,100,000 roughly. That's not the total budget for the town. That's the budget for the town after we put in all of the savings, all of the monies that are being put in from the fund balance and money that we're getting from other sources. Okay. This is the first page of the other sheet that I handed out to you. And what this demonstrates, and you can compare this sheet, the budget summary, to the line item summary to see how the numbers line up. And then you can compare those two to the warrant articles to see how those numbers line up in Articles 2 and 3. The revenue part at the top of Page 1 shows that we made an adjustment to the cable franchise fee. We're, we are told, we have a letter from Spectrum stating that the amount of revenue we're going to receive from them is $98,000. So we returned that figure to where it was in the previous year at 98,000. The local roads program, again, this is one of those instances where we were working off of an estimate, but because time passed, we have the actual figure. And the actual figure is $167,000, not 145. So right off the top, we're $70,000 to the good. That's about 10, 9% of the changes that you're going to see in these pages. The next sections are the administrative budget sections. We've established a personnel development budget for town staff. Town staff is a major part of the town's operating budget. We want to use these professional development programs to make sure that we are honing our customer service skills and our technical skills so that we are better team, teammates, and stronger managers and stronger leaders so that we can provide better service to you as citizens. There were some adjustments to training lines that were made as part of the budget reduction for the town assessor, who was cross-training with the town manager track to be able to fill in in the event that there was a need. There's some technical needs in here. Again, I mentioned an adjustment to the health insurance plan. There was a contracted service for one form of employee time clock that we deleted, and we've added a new one in place. It has a lower annual fee, but there is a fee in the CIP budget for establishing that new program that's recommended by the Human Resources Director. We've made some other adjustments, like the COLA, that we had requested a 6% COLA. It's been reduced to 4%. That includes a 1% performance-based salary adjustment. We like to reward people who do a great job, and we like to give guidance to folks who we'd like to do a better job, and that's based on their job description and goals that we set together every year. There are other memberships and dues in here. I mentioned that there was an administrator position, Public Works Line 0551. We had hoped, I had hoped to bring on a public safety director to help with the transitions we anticipate in the departments, to make sure we're providing good level of services for you. We deleted that due to cost concerns. There's subsequently some Medicare and retirement associated with that. I mentioned earlier that the council, in their Line 0661, added some money for a mailer for the budget. Right above that, we had a PFAS issue at a residence in Gray that we had to increase monitoring, so there's a cost for monitoring their water system. And PFAS is an issue everywhere, but it has come to us here in Gray. On the next, and just to summarize at the bottom of that, there's $289,000 worth of cuts represented here in the general fund budget. That is 38% of the cuts that the council has made. On the next page, you'll see various cuts to the capital improvement plan. We reduced the road construction budget. We deferred the purchase of some vehicles because they're not available to be purchased, but we did include some necessary vehicles for some of the town departments because the vehicles they have don't work, are about to fail, or don't work for the purpose for which they're intended. So we're shuffling some things around to try to keep the number of vehicles we need to buy to a minimum, but we do have staff needs for different types of vehicles. There's other building maintenance there. Some of it, we're deferring partially, some of it entirely to next year, presumably. There were some other things in here, recreational facilities and equipment that we would like to have that we're deferring, similarly with the library. There were some new items added because the, we have an agreement with the Gray Water District that we would install a blow-off hydrant for washing cars and a backflow preventer at one of the fire stations. That's an agreement Gray made several years ago, and we need to honor it. I moved, as I said before, Articles 4, 5, and 6 out of the capital fund budget. That's represented there. It's where it says CIP to UAF and CIP to CIP Reserve. And then those two figures are represented at the very bottom of Page 2, along with a revised fund set aside for next year, FY25, of $100,000 rather than the previously budgeted $325,000. And again, that was a cut to the budget to meet the need that was expressed for a lower If you look at the relative proportion of cost for the town departments from FY23 to FY24, you may blink for a second and not be able to see the difference in the pies because the pieces of the pie are almost the same in almost every case. So there's fundamentally no giant difference in the way we're running the town. It just costs more across the board to run the town. Oil and fuel has gone up for us, electricity, phones, all of it has gone up across the board for us, just like it has for you probably in your business. Some notable expenses, and forgive me if I'm being redundant, but I know a lot of people are looking to get accurate information about the budget to inform their vote at the town meeting on Saturday, September the 9th, and I just want to make sure I'm thorough in covering it for the record. The school district budget increased by a million dollars. I mentioned before, the county budget increased by $125,000 because they're shifting their budget by six months and spreading that cost out for us over five years. We are adding a different insurance benefit for the firefighters and EMT paramedics that better meets their needs, their lifestyle needs, recognizing that at the end of a 25-year career as a firefighter EMT, they need benefits to be there in place for them, some of them when they turn 45 or so, not when they turn 65. So we've added that. It is an expense to the town. It will help us with recruiting mid-career firefighter EMT paramedics, which will help reduce the cost to the town for overtime, per diems, and overtime and per diems, which will offset, we believe will offset that cost, but I can't put figures to it. I just, based on the way the mechanics of that schedule works. The chief can talk more about it than I can. Again, I mentioned the costs for us of goods and services has gone up. Cost for tipping fees is one of those services we have no control over. There's been some talk about wages for town employees, and I've heard some disparaging talk frankly on social media about what people make and whether they deserve it or not. And I'll leave that up to everyone here to make your own judgments, but I will tell you that the figures that I put into the budget and recommended to the town council last year did not come out of nowhere. They came out of a thorough study of 12 towns and cities that are approximately the same size as Gray, not in landmass, but in size of their budget and size of their population. Because what I wanted to do is to be able to say, this guy pays, this person pays $1,000 for taxes, this person pays $1,000. Is it going to affect this person the same as that person? So if you live in Holton, it might not affect you the same way, an increase of $400. If you live in Portland, it probably affects you the other way. But for towns the size of Gray, the wages that we had for valuable town staff were largely below the market average. And so we, council, agreed to make that adjustment, adjustment starting last year and are continuing that in the proposed budget. Town employee jobs are hard. They are technical, and they are challenging and stressful, just like jobs in your sectors and industries and maybe the job that you have. There's a lot of highly technical work that gets done that follows statutes and procedures that have to be done a certain way or else they're wrong. And there's a lot of technical training that goes in behind it also. We have to work to keep our technical skills up from year to year. So I would, I would love to have a conversation with anybody who wants to say that these jobs aren't challenging and worthy of their value, and I'd be happy to talk with you about why I would disagree with that. We've had a lot of interruptions. We have a very small lean staff, so when one person leaves, it affects four other people. Might be like your job, might be like your work, when somebody calls out, affects the whole team. It's like that here. There's a highly competitive market for all levels of town employees, and there's competition from places that we never experienced competition before. So we made those recommendations. Council has stuck with them. The incremental change for this year is $75,000 for those market rate adjustments only. I think it's a great value in making sure that you retain the good staff that you have and are more attractive for the folks you would like the town to hire. Other expenses, we added two positions in the fire department last year, partially, like starting in January. This year, they're fully added for the entire year. We need them. We've converted one full-time CEO position to two positions to try to address the concerns of the business community about being able to get help, get permits, pull things like that. We, I feel it's a step in the right direction. We've had some hiccups there too, due to staffing issues, but I feel like the town's going in the right direction, having more resources available that we can call in if we need them, hopefully. We deleted the public services administrator position. We've added a plow truck driver and a facility summer person that both of those departments need because they're running lean all the time also. We've also added a position in the clerk's office that will help back up the finance director with accounts payable and payroll duties, help the recreation department with their expanded need for registering kids for programs, and will also be another clerk in the clerk's office to help at the desk and to help the town manager with preparing agendas and town meeting materials so that you don't get them all at the last minute. I mentioned some of these other things. Medical care has gone up, just like it has for everybody. We've got a bunch of capital improvement work we need to do. Trucks, I mentioned. Information technology is like our toolkit for us who work in town hall. If our computers don't work, there's really, it's really hard to get any of our work done. And then there's also the bond debt service, which, there's a new bond proposed this year, but there are two bonds that are retiring, and they are basically offsetting one another. It's a slight increase, but it's like $20,000-something thousand dollars. You may recall that two years ago, we had a capital improvement study done by Port City Architecture, and they identified numerous deferred maintenance and life safety issues that the town needs to immediately address for the safety of the public and also to maintain our insurance. And those are in this year's budget and last year's budget. Some of the less urgent building maintenance needs were deferred, hopefully for next year's budget. But there's a method to all of this. There is a reason why we've added these items into the CIP budget, and they are operational for some departments, but they also create capacity for other departments. We're growing. The town is growing. The staff needs to grow to be able to accommodate and meet those needs. We're having some growing pains, so we're making investments in buildings so people have places to work. Made some revenue adjustments in this year's budget, and I made some additional ones that I mentioned to you earlier. Revenue sharing went down because Gray property value increased, and the town gives less money to towns with more, the state gives less money to towns with higher property value. So it's great that your house is worth more, but it means the town gets less money, and that's fine. That's fair. But it means we got less money from them. We're trying to supplement that by looking We're trying to supplement that by looking for other grant opportunities. The rec department is looking to expand the childcare program. One of the items in the bond proposal is to add restroom facilities and additional program space in the maintenance manual arts building to not expand the childcare program, but so that the current childcare program actually has the resources and restrooms it needs to function. We have a one-holer in the men's room here at town hall, and when the kids are in the town hall during summer stuff, because their bathroom's backed up over the other end of campus, there's a line. So it's a real need, and, uh, and it also will create program space, not just for the kids, but for older people also. We've increased our programming for them too. The bond price went up from, uh, the bond amount went up from eight fifty to a million dollars, eight hundred fifty thousand, because we missed the window for the construction projects we had slated for this year when the budget failed. So the consequence of the budget failing is the amount we need to pay contractors to perform the work went up by a hundred fifty thousand dollars. The interest on that also goes up, obviously, because it's a larger amount. I mentioned revenue sharing. All of our permit fees and other planning and plumbing fees have been reduced by the finance director. There is an increase in animal control officer fees, and I mentioned before that we got more from local roads than we anticipated. I want to move on to Article Seven, so if you want to turn to that page in your warrant. Article Seven is about the use of TIF revenue, and tax increment financing is a, the only resource that most municipalities have to promote economic development. You identify an area, you say, this area's taxable value is a million dollars, and every year, any new value over a million dollars, we're going to tax that value, put it in a back pocket, and when we need to do stuff to stimulate economic development in the village, we're going to spend that money out of the back pocket, not out of the front pocket, not coming out of your tax dollars from the property appropriation, but coming from these other funds that are being put in reserve for these specific uses. So this article is asking voters whether you support the use of these funds to advance projects in the Gray Village, including a road construction project with DOT that's going to happen whether Gray participates or not. But if they build the road, it's not going to look as nice as you would want it to, and it's not going to support the type of economic development that the comprehensive plan envisions for Gray. That means residential property tax owners are going to keep footing the bill, and we're going to have a harder time attracting commercial businesses to help offset those costs and have a larger part of the tax mix with you. We've got some stormwater issues we need to resolve in the village and, and on the turnpike. And we've got these great new sports fields envisioned for the baseball team and all these other young people who are really passionate about sports and the families who support them also. So there's a list of, for anybody who's interested, there's a list on this presentation of the different sources and uses of those TIF funds. The total appropriation is six hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars roughly. And some of that is to pay a credit enhancement agreement to the Northbrook Business Park. That credit enhancement agreement that gives money back to them to help with their development costs for that business park. That payment will go away in, I believe, twenty twenty-eight. I believe it's twenty-eight. The bad news is that when that money goes out of the program, you get taxed on the full value of it, so it kind of washes out. So it's not like you're going to see more money. It just means that money's going to go into the general fund rather than the TIF fund, unless you make a change in how that TIF district is structured to support other economic development. Article Eight is the question about the transfer of unassigned general fund balance not to exceed four hundred and seventeen thousand, because that is our best estimate, not having had the FY twenty-three audit yet. We don't have an exact figure, but that's our best estimate. And the purpose of this fund is to help the council pay for certain strategic property acquisitions that will advance the master plan and the town comprehensive plan goals. This is not funny money. This is not just to have in case you need it. It's for specific projects. And if anybody has questions about those, I'd be happy to try to answer them. But we have to be mindful that there are real estate negotiations involved with the conversation. So I apologize if I'm not able to answer all of your questions. Article Nine has to do with the use of the town's remaining ARPA funds. Those funds need to be allocated in this calendar year. Wait, no, FY twenty-four, twenty twenty-four. They need to be allocated by twenty twenty-four. And we have, if you're interested, you can go back and listen to the discussions in the council's budget conversations. We have a list of critical public safety and building safety needs. Many of the items on this list were removed from the capital budget, which means they were removed from your property tax appropriation and were put into this fund. And that is the purpose of this fund. During COVID, the federal government wanted to give local governments a little bit of extra to help with public safety. They thought that we were going to lose a lot of revenue. That did not happen the way they expected it. So we are proposing to allocate these funds for costs that we already needed to pay for that are approved under the terms of the ARPA allowed uses. Enterprise Fund Revenue, Article Ten, again, we're about to get to the place where I've corrected the warrant article, so if you brought an old copy, I'm referring to the new one. Article Ten, this is to accept money for the childcare and recreational programs and any other special revenue that's collected. The childcare program makes money from people paying for their kids to come to summer camp or day camp, after-school camp. That money is kept in a separate account, and that account pays for the cost of that program. It's separate from the town's general fund. So this, this article approves the, being able to collect money for that purpose. Article Eleven is the town council compensation. The only change in this article was adding five hundred dollars in the council chair stipend to recognize that the chair does generally more meetings, has more involvement in creating the meeting agendas, probably prints more paper or spends more time driving back and forth to town hall to meet with staff. And so the council put this five hundred dollars in there for that purpose. Article Twelve is the bond fund question for the repairs, the absolutely necessary repairs to the Pennell Campus septic system, which is very old and on the verge of failure. It serves all the buildings on Pennell Campus, so if it were to fail, probably the sports fields would be unusable, the gym would be unusable, town hall would be unusable, the manual arts building would be unusable. So there would be significant challenges for town hall operations and for the childcare program. Also included in that is the retrofit of the manual arts building to, as I noted before, not, not just expand the childcare program, but to support the program that we already have that does not have enough resources and facilities to run optimally. The bond figure has gone up from eight hundred and fifty to a mil, eight hundred fifty thousand to a million dollars because of the cost of projection for the work. And then there is an increase in the interest. Thankfully, the interest rate remained the same, the same, from Andrus Goggan Bank, but the principal went up, so the interest went up also. Article Thirteen is the so-called LD One question. And again, we're in the new article numbers. I'm using the new article numbers. This was a law that was passed in two thousand twenty-four. The idea behind it was to limit the growth of your municipal tax appropriation, try to keep your taxes under control. And it applies to the town's municipal budget, and it basically sets a limit. And if our budget proposal goes over the limit, we have to ask for special permission from the voters to pass the budget. This budget, this article has to pass for any of the other budget items, the entire budget to pass, any appropriations. This expenditure cap was LD One, the year that it was, went through the legislature. Every year, there's a new LD One, but people still refer to it that way. A more accurate way to refer to it would be the, um, the tax levy cap. Let's see. I just want to note that the cap only applies to the municipal portion. We have, it does not apply to the school portion, so the school portion can go up a million dollars a year. An LD One tax levy cap is not going to save the vote, protect the voters from giant, large fluctuations in your year-to-year tax bill. Sixty-five percent of our budget this year, the town is, sends the tax bill out. But sixty-five percent of the money that we get back, property taxes, goes somewhere else. It goes to the school, it goes to the county. We only have control over thirty-five percent of your budget appropriation for this year. Out of that thirty-five percent, nearly sixty percent of it goes to essential services. And I feel like, you know, things like the library are essential too for a community. But we're talking about nuts and bolts, keeping the roads paved, keeping them plowed, making sure that when you call nine-one-one, someone's there to answer, and making sure that the town enforces its safety, life safety ordinances and codes. Fifty-seven percent of the budget is practically untouchable because of that. You can make discretionary choices about when you buy a fire truck replacement, but operationally, this is the cost of doing business. If you look at the entire budget appropriation, the total appropriation of funds in your tax bill, effectively, if you take out public safety, there's only twenty percent of the total amount of the budget that the town can make decisions about, about how many clerks to have or how many code officers to have. So I just would like everyone to think about that when you're scrutinizing the budget and, and thinking about the amount that the town can really do to make gigantic changes. We have very little control over that if we want the roads to be maintained and plowed and public safety to be able to respond to emergency calls. Article Fourteen, speaking of public safety and emergencies, is, designates a fund where, and this is not a new appropriation, that's why it's separate from the other ones. It designates a fund to put money into that was raised in last year's budget. We didn't know if we were going to spend that money or not. We didn't. We want to put that money away in the event that there's ever a serious climate urgency or you may have noticed the giant rainfalls we've had in recent weeks, washouts, create emergency conditions. If we ever declare an emergency operations plan, which we updated recently with help from Chief Okanik, if we ever activate that, this money is in place to help the town handle any unanticipated costs. Generally, it would be urgent, emergent. We wouldn't have time to wait for a town council meeting to start making decisions if there was a hurricane that leveled buildings or what have you. So this, this is that specific question. If there's an emergency operation called, will you support putting this money that was already raised into a special fund for that? Article Fifteen allows the town to sell a, an old vehicle, for example, and put the money for that old vehicle into the unassigned fund, capital reserve fund, to use for other purposes. Typically, when, at least sometimes, let's say, when we buy a new vehicle like for fire and rescue, it doesn't always have all of the gear on it that we would like. And sometimes it's nice to be able to take that thirty thousand dollars you got for the nineteen seventy-one pumper and buy hose or jaws of life or, you know, whatever other miscellaneous equipment we need to be operational but wasn't put on the truck when we bought it. Article Sixteen allows people to make special donations to special projects in Gray like Dry Mill School or the Library Association or the Historical Society. We just need this to pass to be able to receive those gifts through the town. And finally, Article Seventeen authorizes the town to accept intra-governmental payments from the federal government, from state government, from the Brownfields Assessment Program, from the US EPA, from any private donors, nonprofits, or foundations who may want to make a gift to the town to help offset certain costs or designated costs. I understand that the fluctuations in the mill rate raise concern for people. And I also own a house, and I've also seen mine fluctuate, so I totally respect that. I understand why some of you are here to talk about how that's going to affect you. I respect that. Our goal here is to take small steps toward long-term fiscal responsibility. And that means growing an economy in Gray that is a little more diverse, has a community center that will hopefully stimulate residential growth in the village, and will help create a place that's not about tractor-trailers driving down Main Street to get to Auburn, but a place where people come here because they want to come shopping or they want to visit their accountant or their doctor or go to a shop here in the village. And we have some great business people in the village already. We just want to enhance that and grow the commercial property tax base in Gray. There are other locations for a commercial property tax increase in Gray. We want to look at those also. But we need a long-term plan to do that. So some of the money in this budget, particularly from the TIF fund, the CIP fund, goes into paying for some of that. Some of the items in the budget are to increase the level of staffing just a little bit to help us deal with people being out sick or people's kids being out sick or someone takes another job or what have you. These things happen all the time, everywhere. But when they happen here, it is really, has a major effect on our capacity to do business. I noted here that we eliminated that one public services position, and we've got the other ones that I mentioned in here. I mentioned the comprehensive plan. This is a guidebook that was set out several years ago, three years ago, for how we can grow the local economy sustainably and carefully. There's money in the budget for these purposes. I've identified different articles and projects that they're funding. The goal is to invest in a Gray Village as a place that attracts new business and real estate investment, creates a vital center for public life and meets other community needs. This will grow a commercial tax base to help residential taxpayers carry the cost of local government services. So I, I will just tell you that I stand by the budget. I stood by it before. I think there are some sound investments in there. Recognize the need to trim some of that back, and I think the council has heard that message from voters. And you'll see in this budget that those changes are reflected. But I will say that for me, if anything, there's not enough in this budget. There are certain emergencies or urgencies that happen that we don't have any funding for. We don't have any giant slush funds or contingency funds. There's a twenty thousand dollar contingency fund on a twelve million dollar operating budget. It's, it's just really not enough. It's not enough for strategic investments. It's not enough for the level of staff that we have that will help us through transitions. And it's certainly not enough to help us with unplanned expenses. So I am grateful for your attention. I'm happy to answer questions about this budget material. I hope that my presentation clarifies any questions or issues you might have and helps you make informed decisions at the town meeting, which again is on Saturday, September the ninth. At nine-thirty, the town council will give a brief presentation of the budget. And at ten-thirty, the town meeting will officially begin at the Gray New Gloucester High School in the auditorium. And there will be childcare services provided from nine to no later than five PM or whenever the meeting ends there in the auxiliary gym. And there is a sign-up sheet on the town's website, or you can call the rec program to sign up. You need to register. You need to register child in advance if you want the child to be in the program on the day of Saturday, September the ninth. And it is a privilege, and I thank you all for your time, and I will go back down and answer any questions I can.
Thank you, Nate. I would like to open up the public hearing, but before we do so, I think it would be wise to take just a five-minute break in case anyone used to use the facilities, I know I do. So, just, we'll resume again at six fifty-eight. Thank you. Okay, at this time, I'd like to open the public hearing for comments. I just, folks are welcome to come up to the podium, just take turns. When you do get up there, I just ask that you please just state your name and your address and sign in. There should be a sign-in sheet on the podium. Yeah, if, if you could please also keep your comments to around three minutes, that would help us move along. I'm not going to keep you hard and fast to that, I know this is sort of an open hearing, but just keep that time limit in mind if possible. Would anyone like to come up?
Okay, for clarification, you said the mill rate would be approximately?
Sorry, just, just sorry, could you just be saying your name?
Oh, I'm sorry, I apologize. Fran Monroe, Lewiston Road, Gray.
Thank you.
And so for clarification, you said the estimate mill rate is fifteen point one eight?
That's correct.
Is that what you said? You're going to have the actual for the hearing, correct?
We won't have the actual until commitment is done, but this is fairly-
You'll have to speak up, I'm so sorry.
The actual final figure won't be complete until the tax commitment is done, so that is on a different time schedule than the meeting, but it is approximately, it's a fairly close approximation. More than likely, if anything happens, that property values will be assessed higher and the mill rate will go down, which has been the case for the last two years.
Yeah, the state assessment for property values comes in after we go through our budget process. So we use an estimation every year, this is our best guess for what that value, what those values will be.
Okay, I'm just, you know, a little concerned because this morning, I thought I'd play it right this time and get all my information on the day of the meeting. Although I reviewed everything, I wanted to make sure I'm coming to the meeting with exact, you know, the information. Spent a lot of time going through the warrant this morning, and I get here and it's completely changed. It's really not fair. It shows not having quite a good handle on, on what you're doing, that's number one.
Where's the commitment change, I'm sorry?
I'm sorry?
I don't, I don't recall a change in anything other than the order, can you tell me where there was a change in the commitment?
Well, I'm not going to go too all the way, I'll give you the sheet.
Okay, I just want to make sure we're having an accurate conversation.
Yeah, Nate, let me just, yeah, so-
I have the sheets right there, and I'll give them to you.
Yeah, so Fran, you are right that the warrant articles are in a different numerical order, because there was an error. We skipped over Article twelve, and so now we had to account for that.
And we had fifty thousand on something, and it's a hundred thousand now.
None of the numbers, none of the numerical numbers have changed on the warrants from what is posted online.
I, I beg to differ, but we're not going to argue about that right now, but there is, it was fifty thousand, now it's a hundred.
If you could point out which article, I could speak to it.
I'd be glad to as soon as I get my papers organized here, because it's very disconcerting when you have, come prepared, and then, you know, things are different. And that brings me to the warrant itself. I've been through a lot of budgets in this town, fifty years' worth, and anytime the budget failed, the only items that came back to the citizens were the failed items. The warrant that I downloaded had, last year's, the budget that we started with had twelve articles, that's the one that failed. And today, I downloaded eighteen, and now I come to the meeting, there's seventeen. Okay, so, things changed.
Well, let me, let me speak to that, you are right, they did change, and the council had a conversation about that. We made those changes at the recommendation of our, the town attorney. We were concerned that it would be confusing for residents, we also had that concern. But our attorney advised that we really should be pulling out certain items, like the ARPA funds, and also the appropriations that we have in reserve accounts from capital improvement funds in particular. The, the totals are not different in that those totals still add up to what you're seeing on the summary sheet you received. But, but it is, I do agree that it is, it can be confusing since there are different numerical alignment between the two warrants.
Back to my question.
Yeah.
We only voted in the past on the failed articles. Now we're voting on all eight, seventeen articles now.
That's also at the recommendation of our, of our attorney. We had a long conversation about that at the beginning of this provision process, about whether or not we only wanted to revisit those items that had failed. The council decided to follow the advice of our attorney. She, she thought that since because, since LD1 article failed on the original warrants, that basically meant the entire budget had failed, and so we needed to approach it that way.
Okay, all right, so... Just a second, please. Oh, have you selected a moderator for the town meeting?
Yes, we'll be using Natalie Burns, she's one of the attorneys at the town's law firm, Jensen Baird.
That's good to hear, okay. And now, for-
Of course, I just want to make a note, part of the town meeting process will be voting on the moderator, so that's our recommendation, but technically, that can change at the meeting.
That's correct, yeah, that's right. We have to, the first item is, of course, select a moderator. Most of the moderators that used to do it in town are no longer with us, so, may, you know, a little different now. Okay, so, because of what was said this evening, I think I'll address that first. And, do we have a full-time animal officer?
We have a contracted animal control officer.
You have a contract, you said a contract?
He's part-time, he responds on call.
I don't know why I'm having trouble hearing you.
He has, he responds when he's called, but he's not, he doesn't have, he doesn't sit full-time, he goes out when he gets a phone call.
Okay, so when one of your members that you gave to the council, you suggested, you know, get new, new vehicles, and, because you're going to swap, and the, the animal control officer vehicle wasn't going to make it, I guess. That, I think that's what the words, wasn't going to make it. So you started going down the list and bringing down the cars and, and that type of thing, and that's why you want two new vehicles. Why are we supplying a vehicle? I mean, what kind, if he's only on call, why are we not paying per diem or something like that? I mean, you know, mileage, why are we buying a new vehicle, getting a new vehicle for him?
He receives a stipend for his time, and the town provides a vehicle because it's, it's not attractive for someone to use their own personal vehicle to get, you know, angry dogs and feral animals and things like that. It's not done that way in any of the communities around that I'm aware of.
Were we sharing him or her with the town of Gloucester as well?
Not at this time.
No, okay. Okay, so one of the comments you made is that, that the salary accounts had to be increased, but you have to be competitive with other towns and communities in order to make, you know, get staff. Well, we did that last year, and yet you lost fifteen employees this year. It's astronomical, I've never seen that happen in this town before, and that many at one time. So, and so it makes it, you know, something to consider and, you know, discuss them, because if you've increased the salaries and they leave anyway, I'm, I'm not sure how that all relates. Now, we also have-
Point of information, if I could.
Pardon?
Just a point of information. The salary increases, we couldn't, we didn't think that we could afford them all at once, so the proposed base increase, depending on the different jobs, we put sixty percent of the money in last year, and the increase this year is the other forty percent of that market study.
While I'm on that, the staff, you were understaffed for a good part of the year, and, and yet, the salary, the salaries have gone up with all the benefits and everything. Shouldn't have we seen a decrease because you had overage, or is that what we're operating now? The town is operating all that extra money left over from, you know, not paying certain people because they weren't here, and that type of thing. Is that where some of the overage is, because we're operating on last year's budget, so?
That's a bit confusing, I think you're making some broad generalizations about what's happened.
I asked, I've been asking.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, well, I'll, I'll try to explain. Across the board, the, not just the state, but the nation, there has been an enormous migration in and out of municipal jobs, mostly out. There's a lot of attrition, and a lot of retirements. And in the past, you used to be able to find a pool of mid-career candidates who you could hire for senior-level positions, but those folks have moved on to other careers or retired. So, there are numerous articles available online, if anyone's interested, about the shift in municipal work culture, and about the, the number of people who have quit or changed jobs in the last two years. It has been precipitous and remarkable, and not like anything any of us have ever seen. And it's happening everywhere. Just in the last week, I, I am privy to know that there's four town managers have left their jobs around the state of Maine. And there are currently RFPs out for contracted services for municipal government that used to be competitive, that now we can't even find one person to respond to. So the entire marketplace, both for employees and contracted services, has completely shifted.
Okay, you know, you also made, and I hear this every time there's a budget meeting, that we have to keep up our, our infrastructure and our buildings and all this stuff, and every year, the taxpayers have been funding these projects, and they have not denied what the town requested. And yet, here again tonight, we're hearing that, you know, things aren't working. Especially the computer systems, and you just stated that the computer system, which surprised me, we just did a whole complete rehab on computer systems a few years ago. So, I don't know what that's all about, but I just want to bring that out to light.
Could I respond?
Pardon?
Could I respond?
Certainly.
The desktop computers for all of the town hall staff were replaced, but the servers that handle our internet traffic and email and file storage all need to be updated. They're all past their service life, and those are very expensive computers to replace. We also are doing a cybersecurity audit to help us with protecting ourselves from attacks and ransomware attacks on the town to, because the price tag for paying somebody off for ransom for that is extremely high.
Yeah, and I, I just want to add that it's true, we have been funding maintenance costs every year, but there's new things to fund every year, I know that's true in my home, I, you know, I replace one thing and something else breaks.
Tell me about it.
There's just, yeah, there's, there's just, you know, there's always, there's always going to be maintenance on our facilities.
So I don't like the inference that we're not supporting that, that we, the taxpayers, because we, the taxpayers, support whatever you tell us we need to support. And so, you know, that inference tonight, I, I thought was not, not, you know.
I certainly didn't mean to imply that. I just know that, I know that the study that we received from Port City identified some, some errors. And it's like anything, you know, you pay to maintain your house, but sometimes, something you're not paying attention to is failing over in a corner, under an eve, and when you find it, you've got to fix it.
So when, when the taxpayers turn down the budget, they expect the expenses to, you know, be looked at closely. What I find in, in these cuts, or whatever you want to call them, I guess you're calling them cuts, is just shifting of money. And also, the prolonging thirty-three percent, thirty percent of the amount of money is being just held off until next year. So it's, it's not a cut, it, it's something that will be hit with next year with even more higher prices. So, when you're looking at the capital improvement accounts, and then you're looking at transfer money from one account to another account, those aren't cuts, those are transfers and using, you know, savings, if you want to call it that. Those are transfers and using, you know, savings, if you want to call it that.
You're right.
Cuts mean, you know, like if, for instance, included in this budget is the salary increase of the town manager's salary, seventy-seven hundred dollars. And training of forty-five hundred dollars. And that was according to the contract you agreed with, with evidently when you hired him. Well, he's not going to be here to get that seventy-seven hundred dollar raise. So, and I hope the new town manager is going to be starting at a le- lower level. And that's, I don't, I mean, don't mean to go outside, but I think the next time it's coming time to hire a town manager, we've done this in the past, is you get a town committee together and, and they do the hiring. We have done that in, in a couple of instances, and so, keep that in mind. But that's a cut. Seventy-seven hundred and fifty dollars coming out of the budget is called a cut. And, um, also, it seemed, I thought, and I could be wrong, maybe I am, but if the town manager went on a seminar to Harvard, he, and he leaves, he was supposed to pay that money back? Is that the case, or am I wrong?
We're looking into what our personnel policy says regarding that, yeah, so.
Okay.
What, I'd like to keep the, the focus of this conversation on the provisions and the-
Cuts. I'm on cuts.
Yeah, and we have made quite a few cuts. The transfers you're referring to did not make an impact on the budget. They were existing funds from last year's allocations that were moving into funds for specific purposes that they were intended for. Um, we have made quite a few cuts, um, for, um, our general, general fund and also CIP. You are right that we deferred some items in the CIP to next year, um, but we also cut some of those fundings. Um, for, for instance, we cut fifty thousand dollars from road construction at the recommendation of our public works director.
And I had brought, I went to another, the last public hearing, so I already talked about cuts at that time, so I'm not going to repeat everything. Um, I can save that for the town meeting. But, um, you know, those are the things that, um, um, you know, really were on the top of my mind um, that really definitely impact, oh, auditor, I forgot about the auditor. We have a staff that's newly hired toward the district here. And, um, we have a town council that part of it is inexperienced. And so, we don't have an auditor. And in the past, when the town manager left, we've always for the, for, I would think the town manager would request it, request an audit of, of the records to make sure everything's up to par. And so, that's usually done, town managers usually request that. If they don't, I, as a citizen, and hope the rest of the citizens will request that. We need to have the insurance that everything's okay.
Yeah, I agree. We have, um, we, we certainly have an audit every single year at the end of the fiscal year. Our plans are to do so again for FY twenty-three, which just concluded in June. Um, but we have our request for proposals out for a new audit firm, um, our, and we're currently waiting on responses before we-
So, what's wrong with the older firm that we have for ten years?
They, um, are, um, basically at capacity, uh, and we also decided we are going to go out to RFP for all of our professional services every five years, just to make sure we're remaining competitive for those services. And that was decided to do, we decided to do that this year. Dan, did you have a comment?
Yeah, unfortunately, um, unfortunately, we don't have an auditor now, um, and we do need to find one. We were about to enter into an agreement with an auditing firm. Unfortunately, the owner of the firm passed away. We have an, we're gonna be putting out an RFP for a new audit firm. Other communities besides ourselves are having a great deal of difficulty finding an audit firm, and that is a big concern.
So, we're able to let the other guy go then, huh? I mean, you know, he's experiencing, you know, at town inside out.
We didn't let him go. He was more than welcome to reply to the RFP process that we put out, and he decided he'd-
Oh, he didn't reply?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
He retracted his reply. They replied, we hired another person. That person died. We're looking for a new auditor. Maybe that, when we send out an RFP, they will apply again. We'll have to wait and see.
I see. Okay. Well, hopefully, because as a citizen, I'm a little concerned with lack of experience, and everything's wide open now, I feel. Um, okay. I think, uh, I give someone else a chance. I think I've gone way over my time.
If, if I may, I'll just-
I appreciate your time.
I'll just note on that last point, uh, the town's current finance director is a mid-career, uh, finance, uh, professional, and she's new to municipal finance, uh, government finance, but she is not new to government financing. And thankfully, our town clerk has a background in commercial banking and was able to stand in during the transition. So, I want to just, um, recognize and applaud both of them for their efforts, uh, working on this budget presentation and all of the other things that they're doing.
Thank you, Fran.
Yep.
Anyone else?
Not sure I'm seeing the sign-in sheet, but Bob Coleman, Ballyhigh Road in Gray. First, let me just, uh, thank the committee. I know how unfair it is, if you will, for people like me to show up at the eleventh hour and complain about the work that was done. Um, I wish I had the time to attend all the budget workshops and, and, you know, play a more active role, but I just don't. So, but, um, so I do thank you, and I do appreciate it. Um, that said, I had, I do have a few concerns that I like to raise. One, one thing that, that I want to say is thank you for creating a spreadsheet or a document, I'll say, that has FY twenty-one, I think it is, or twenty-two, twenty-three, I think it even goes back to FY twenty-twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three actuals, and then FY twenty-four proposed. I found that helpful, but I do have a few con- concerns with that document. Um, one is that it, it was not in, it's not on the website in the budget section, which I found extremely frustrating because I couldn't find it. I didn't know it existed. I showed up here today all frustrated that I didn't have that data, and when I got here, I found it in the agenda packet for this meeting. I just asked that all of the budget documents, including Nate's presentation from today and all of the documents, that they all be put in one place on the web, on the website so that citizens can find them and be educated when they show up on September ninth. Um, also, on that document, I find, there, there's a missing column that I feel is critical, and that is the percentage increase by line item for FY twenty-three to FY twenty-four. That column does not exist on that spreadsheet, and I would ask, respectively, that, respectively, respectfully, that we add that column, please, because that's a, a critical piece of data. How much is each line item changing from last year to this year? That would be very helpful. I, I'll say this, um, and I probably shouldn't admit this because my wife's in the audience, but when I want to buy something, if I say, honey, it's five thousand dollars, and then a week later or a month later, I come back and say, I can get it, it's only four thousand dollars, it's kind of disingenuous. I'm still spending four thousand dollars to buy that item. And I feel like that that's kind of what we're doing here. We're comparing the, the, what was voted on versus what the new proposal is. But I think we're ignoring the fact or, or, or not making it clear to the citizens that it's still a seventeen percent increase, if I did the math right, over last year. And I, and those numbers are critical. Again, that column, which would show that, would, would be helpful to be able to see. Because, because I get it, I mean, there's certain things that are going to go up and we have no control over. And I'm not going to complain about that. I mean, it is what it is. But those things that we do have control over, or we do have the ability to sway one way or the other, it would be very helpful to know what those things are and be able to see those proposed increases and understand them so that I can confidently vote yea or nay on, on the budget on September ninth. And the other thing I would sort of ask, and this is a personal thing, but I think it would help citizens like me, is if we could put some of those documents on the website in Excel format? Because I could have grabbed it in, if it were a spreadsheet, I could have grabbed it, I could have added that column, I could have did the math in a few minutes, and I could have had the information I needed. So, something to consider. I know you may not be able to do that, but that would be extremely helpful to actually provide Excel or spreadsheets of some sort, as opposed to PDFs, which can't be manipulated. We can't check equations, we can't check the math, we can't do anything with PDFs, so. I guess the last thing I'll say is, um, you know, Nate started his presentation tonight with some comparisons with the town budget versus personal budget. And our, you know, our, our increase, we're all seeing increases across the board, and that's, that's a true statement. But let me just say for the record, I would love it, absolutely love it, if the town ran its budget the way I have to run my personal budget. I have to run my personal budget by looking at my revenue, my income, how much money am I going to make this year? What are my expenses? And I have to bring those two things in alignment. The way we run the budget is, I look at my revenue, I look at my expenses, there's a delta, and then I go to my neighbors and I knock on their door and I say, I can't balance my budget. Could you give me more money? Could you give me some of your money? So, that's what, when we raise taxes, that's essentially what we're doing. We're asking our neighbors to help balance our budget. So, for the record, it would be great if we actually could balance our budget. We could bring revenue and expenses in line. Revenues go up, and by the way, it's one other thing I'll just mention on that spreadsheet that was included in the agenda packet. I had a real tough time with the revenue numbers. There's, there's, for example, one revenue section where we showed six hundred and eighty thousand dollars in revenue in FY twenty-three and zero in FY twenty-four. I don't think that's a mistake. It's probably a reshuffling somehow of, and that's just one example. So, so the revenue part is critical, so, so I would just ask that we, like, for example, there's no section that summarizes all the departments and their revenue, like there are expenses. The expenses, there's a page that shows all of the expenses and how it all adds up, but it's missing on the revenue parts. I would ask that that one page get added. And then again, we can look at that revenue, because revenue does go up every year from a lot of, you know, vehicle, it costs a lot more for me to register my car now than it did five years ago.
Well, the state revenue sharing for us went down about five hundred thousand dollars this year, so, from last year. So, I don't think revenue always goes up for town government, unfortunately.
But again, to be able to see that and know that and understand, okay, this is what's happening this year on the revenue side. This is what's happening on the expense side. These are the discretionary kinds of things. That would be very helpful, again, because the idea is, like, the hope is that when we show up to vote on September ninth, that we understand what we're voting, and we, we know, okay, yes, I can get behind this. I, I understand why I have to pay more money. Because I, I, again, I, I know I can afford to, to pay a little bit more, but there are people in, in town that can't. That, and it's part of their budget, you know, it's part of their expenses going up is when they have to pay more for their real estate taxes, so. Um, anyway, I just, that's, that's all I have to say. Again, thank, thank the committee for all the hard work.
Yeah, thank you. Dan, you had something? I did want to say a couple things.
Yeah, just a couple of thoughts. The budget process that we have in town, um, has grown and evolved over a lot of years. And to my knowledge, no council has sort of taken a step back and taken a look at the whole process from soup to nuts and said, is this really the best way for us to put together a town budget? Obviously, we're not going to be able to do that before the town meeting, but we've talked about doing that as a council, because I, I think there is a better way, and I think that we can be more precise, and I think we can be more concise. And if we can do both of those things, I think it will instill the confidence that you're talking about. On the revenue side, I think, you know, um, the town doesn't, um, get a raise or have other sources of revenue. We have some federal money, we have state money. Other people have control of those streams, and as Krista mentioned, they make adjustments to them when they think that we have, we're getting more than our fair share, we're too much. We do have to get better, and I think we can get better about explaining how all those revenue streams come together. As far as parceling the revenue out sort of on, on the same, um, account level that we do the expenses, they don't necessarily fit together. The excise tax money that comes in isn't, doesn't just go to fund vehicles. It goes into agenda.
Yeah, I wasn't asking for, uh, section by section, expense revenue, expense revenue. I was asking for, at the end of the reven, you have all the revenues at the end. At the very end of that, list each department or each revenue source.
Yes.
And the change. It was X in two thousand and twenty-three. Here's the new value. This is the delta change.
Got it. Thank you.
We have done that in the past.
Yeah, a lot of the revenue figures we're operating with when we present the budget are estimates because we haven't collected all of our excise tax for the year and property taxes. Well, the property taxes are set by our expenses.
Is there an explanation for that six hundred thousand dollar?
I'm not sure what you're referring to.
I have to get into the revenue. It's, what I was hoping to do-
It's in the agenda packet page. Uh, let's see, I got it right here. I had it, yeah.
While you're looking for that, I just want to say, I, the, I think everyone here is concerned about those folks that may struggle and may have difficulty paying their taxes or paying any other expenses. Um, while I've been on the council and I've been in town for thirty-odd years, I don't ever remember the council taking someone's home away from them or property away from them just because they couldn't pay the taxes. We've had people, we've had people who have come to us, who we've had to work with, but, and recently, we did give a piece of tax-acquired property back to a person who settled with the town. So, it, it's, and I can, uh, let me be more specific. In the six years I've been on the council so far, we haven't taken away anyone's home. And I don't think this council would take away anyone's home without first trying to work out something for that person.
Because most people would prioritize their real estate taxes higher than other so-called discretionary spending that they might have.
That's true.
So, they're going to pay their taxes. They have to, right, or they're going to lose their home. So, the fact that we don't have to take homes, I don't think is a good indicator of, of the fact that how much this really means to people that are on a fixed income or, or struggle with their budgets, so.
I think we under, all understand that.
Good.
But it's, it's an indicator.
Yeah. So, pa- page, uh, one sixteen of, of the budget or of the, uh, spreadsheet that was included in tonight's agenda package, or page one twenty-five of the agenda package.
That's an easy one to explain.
Good.
This is the enterprise fund for the rec program that I mentioned, and this revenue was counted over the course of the year and put in here as a figure. But we don't, this year just began, so we haven't collected that money out of the rec fund.
But wouldn't we have a budget if we collected?
This is a revenue, no, we don't know.
We won't, we don't budget revenue?
We can't, we can't budget, we can budget, we can make projections, but that's not what goes into TRIO. TRIO is money that's actually transferred into it.
Yeah, so the-
And that's what this report is.
Yeah, so a lot of what you're asking for, I agree. We definitely need some clarity in our documents. Um, with this, the, the hundreds-plus-page document you're referring to here is, is coming out of a software program called TRIO that really is limited in how we can produce reports. It doesn't have a lot of Excel exporting capabilities, and there's been some bugs this year recently that they're trying to fix, which we've had to kind of manually, manually go in and do some, um, fixes ourselves. So, that's why we're not seeing a lot of the things we've seen in the years past.
So, again, it get, it would be, to my earlier point, it'd be really helpful to see, here's all the revenue we project for twenty twenty-four. Here's the projected changes over twenty twenty-three. Here's the bottom line on revenue. Here's, same thing on expenses, and here's what we're voting for.
I agree. That would help us too, and I, as Dan kind of inferred earlier, we, we do plan to sit down as a council and talk about how we could do this process a little better, including our documentation. Um, and we will definitely get everything up on the website in advance of the town meeting. And we will definitely get everything up on the website in advance of the town meeting. And I just, I just wanted to make one other point, you mentioned the 17% increase in the municipal monetary appropriation, which is not an incorrect figure, but the mil rate increase has gone down from a 13% increase to a 9% increase. And I always, and I also want to note, as Nate did in his presentation, that we are also absorbing any increases from the school and the county in those mil rate increases. So it's not just a reflection of our costs going up, it's also a reflection of the already-approved school budget and county expenses.
But my 17% figure, I believe, was just the municipal part of that.
It's the mon, it was the monetary increase, yeah, which, I mean, the prior increase was 31, so we've decreased it down to 17.
Yeah, so again, back to my wife's example, I got my thing down to $4,000, but it's still a significant increase, 17%.
Yeah.
Again, I understand a lot of it is outside of our control, but.
Seventeen percent of the 35% of your tax bill.
Right.
Correct.
Yeah, so that's one of the things that we struggle with, is that we own the LD1 adjustment, yet we're responsible for that whole piece. And when voters understandably aren't happy about the LD1 adjustment, last year, people voted for a $1 million LD1 change. This year's was $800,000, because it was less than last year's.
And now we've lowered it down to $55,000.
And now it's $55,000. People see that as coming out of their pocket, but that increase isn't driven just by the town's budget.
Yeah, I mean, my challenge when we look at mil rate is just that if mil rate goes up every year, eventually, I'm going to be paying 100% of my property value to the town, or to someone, the state, the town, the county, someone, at some point. So, to the extent that we can hold the mil rate at whatever it is, and try to figure out new revenue sources, ways of balancing revenue and expenses.
The real solution is diversifying the tax base.
Yeah.
That, yeah, that to.
We, diversifying the tax base changes where the revenue has to come from, and it takes the pressure off us homeowners to fund the lion's share of that.
Yeah.
So, when we talk about, you know, infrastructure projects like Main Street or Yarmouth Road or any of those things that we do, where the TIF funds to try and improve the infrastructure to make the town more appealing for people to come in and spend that kind of development money here, ultimately, that's the real solution.
Yeah. Okay.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak?
I'm Pam Edson, and I live at 95 Yarmouth Road. I actually wanted to bring up really quick Article 9 about the ARPA funds. And my question is, I guess maybe this was all in the last budget, guys, in our warrant articles before, and now you've set it out.
No, so this is one of the recommended changes from our lawyer. So we, we were previously told that we could make these allocations at the council level, and our lawyer has instructed us that it just would, we could cover our bases more if we put it in a warrant article, so.
Okay, well, so my question, this money came into the town for COVID, and I believe I'm right in saying that we chose as a town not to give any of this, I'm actually surprised to see this number sitting here, because I'm like, wow, we had that much money left over from COVID relief? And I knew that back in the time, when they were giving out money to emergency personnel and people that were on the front lines, that we withheld it from per diem workers during that time period? I understand, I'm under that assumption, that not everybody that was in the paramedic or firefighter, unless they were full-time, did they all get a little bit of this ARPA money?
So we did approve premium pay increases for fire rescue staff as part of the ARPA funds in FY23. There's also, in this, you'll see in this one, a premium pay increase for frontline staff this year. I don't know for sure about the per diem.
We did make, the council has the authority to appropriate up to 10% of the fund, and in last year's budget, they appropriated under 10% of the fund, in part to provide a premium pay to all full-time gray fighter-fighter EMTs. Many of our part-time and per diem firefighters work for other departments, and they do some shifts for us on the side, and they got premium pay from wherever they work. There are a couple of rare exceptions, I can think of one person who does not, and that person, I explained all of that to him, and the chief explained that to him last year in the budget. The money was appropriated to full-time gray firefighter EMTs. Now, with that said, there is money in a reserve line at the bottom of the fund, and if the council saw fit to listen to this person's concerns about feeling like they didn't get this, even though all of the other per diem and part-time firefighters didn't get it also, I'm sure that he could present that case to the council.
Well, I was just curious that we had all this money left, and that was like, you know, while we're sitting in our plexiglass offices with masks, and they were out on the front lines, I'm walking right into the whole COVID mess, you know, it seems like that would have been the thing to do.
We did, we did recognize, yeah, the individuals you're talking about, for the most part. I wasn't aware about the per diem exception, but that was our intent with the premium pay last year for fire rescue.
All right. So, all right, so this brings me to my next thing. We were talking about tonight, how the salaries and the increases, because we want to be competitive with the towns around us. And one of my problems that I've seen, because I was an employee here, was the fact that we, we're only open to the, we work a 36-hour work week here, okay? And we get an hour lunch. So we work a 32-hour work week, really. Not everybody may, because we have salary people that do work additional hours. But with that said, I want you guys to understand that the clerk's office is open 29 and a half hours a week right now. And it's very unfortunate, because on the Thursday mornings, when the code office is open, but the clerk's office is not, and Nate, we've had this conversation, you and I, we get all the people that are disgruntled, that come into, because they can get into our area, they just can't get into the clerk's area during lunchtime, I'm sorry, during lunch. So, I'm just thinking that you guys, we really need to get this place working and running at 36 hours. And Thursday mornings, I'm going to be honest, you have an election coming up in November, and because I was the voter registrar, I know how important that Thursday before election is. It's the last day to vote absentee, and we have that, we have a, we have a state election coming up in November. And really, I watched in June, this woman came to vote at about 10:00, we weren't open. She came back on her lunch, and we weren't open. And that was the Thursday that you could vote before you had to vote a special absentee ballot. So, I just feel like, you guys, we need to be open. That means all of us sitting in here, working on Thursday mornings, and being closed to the public, it's foolish. It is, it's foolish, and.
I'll let Nate speak to that, yeah.
He has spoken to it.
Well, and I'll speak to it again, since it's been brought up in a public meeting. When we, as a staff, all decided that, I received numerous complaints from town staff that they didn't have enough time, including people in the planning and development office, that they didn't have enough time to do their filing and their work. And so we agreed as a town hall staff that we were all going to be closed on Thursday morning, so that you could have time for filing. It was not my decision for the development office to be open on Thursday mornings. In fact, it's the opposite of what I asked for and what everybody told me they needed. So, that is not something that I can really explain. When it comes to the hours for town staff, town hall staff in particular, I agree that there is a discrepancy between the hours that gray town hall is open versus many of the municipalities around us. And that this is something that the Human Resources Director and I have done research on and planned. John plans to make a presentation to town staff to talk about the best way to resolve that and to make a recommendation to the town council in the coming year.
Well, I was here when Judy Rian ran that office single-handedly for four months. So it seems to me that even if you had two, that it could be open the hour lunchtime. And if not, we have, there is somebody else in our building that can help if need be. But I really wanted to talk about the Thursday morning thing, because I think it's unfortunate that we're closed to the public until 11:00, so we can sit and work uninterrupted. I mean, we have people that need to pay for their plumbing permits, pay for their, you know, they stop by on their way from one job to another, and yes, they can do it online if their computer's savvy, and a lot of these electricians and plumbers don't have time for that. And so, I'm just saying, to have the door locked, they can't pay for permits, they can't, if they happen to be here, they can't come in and apply for their plumbing and electrical if they go and buy it that morning, it's unfortunate. I mean, we here in the, these are who we work for, they pay our salary, right here, we're looking at them.
That's what we're here talking about, the budget.
I understand that. Well, Dan, you know, we've got a big budget. I just want to get it, I just think we should be giving full service.
Pam, your comments are noted, and we certainly will discuss them. It has come up in council conversation about the hours, and we have concerns about availability of people here too. So, we certainly will talk about it some more, and, you know, we'll bring it up with Nate and whoever comes after him. But yeah, I would like to focus the conversation on actual budget numbers, if you could do that.
Well, thank you.
Adam Wilkinson, 86 Yarmouth Road. And I'm actually, I will keep my comments brief. And I'm actually going to follow up on something Pam just said. And I'm going to give an example, because it's real life to me. I just recently registered one of my vehicles, and it took me five trips to this building to do it. I showed up two times, it was on lunch break, I showed up Thursday morning. Now, we start, I work there two hours before, and we usually will work in two hours after town facilities are open. I think what Pam says is extremely important, to provide the services, because we're a revenue stream. And frankly, I think it's extremely unprofessional. I mean, I think of when Mr. Rudy said professional services was one of the line items. I see that as definitely a professional service that needs some working on. And anybody that knows us contractors, on our lunch break, we usually field two, three, four, five, six phone calls while we're eating, and we don't have an hour lunch. So, I do think not having anybody manning that office over there is frankly kind of embarrassing. And I know I've showed up in the planning department, and I've shared my gripes with them. So, yeah, they have been feeling some ugly customers when they see large doors, so. I just wanted to back her up on that, because I agree with what she said.
Yeah, as I told her, it's noted, and we definitely hear the concern, and we will have a conversation about it.
And I don't think we disagree.
Right. Would anyone else like to speak to the budget?
Mike Alt, North Raymond Road. So one thing I found, since I printed the 130-some-odd-page document and then left it on my desk, thank you for having the handouts here this evening. I have a couple of questions, and one is on the, well, one is on the presentation that Mr. Rudy gave at the beginning of the meeting, the other is on the, I'll call it a spreadsheet, a two-page, basically, list of changes. I think they're accurately termed changes on the sheet, but I heard them called cuts many times during the presentation. And I don't think that's accurate to call these cuts. So while it's helpful to have this sheet and show exactly where the changes are made, I think what would really be helpful would be to know that out of this 700-and-some-odd-thousand change, $754,000 change, how much of that is actually spending cuts? In other words, money that is not going to be spent this year? Versus, how much of that is moving money from one account to another or out of the general budget onto a separate warrant article? To me, that's not a cut. Versus, how much of it is a revised revenue estimate or revised cost estimate? I would have liked to see that breakdown, so that I could truly see what's been made for cuts, because it's not $754,000.
Sure, I can try to answer that. One answer to that question is that everything, so we do our budgets year to year, and that's just the way our process works. Everything in here for this year is a cut. I think the question that you're asking is, which of these things is going to come back next year? And short answer is, none of it has to. But what I would guess would come back up would be more on, some of the like, training and membership dues, things like that, that's at the discretion of the town manager. If a department head wants training on something like, for example, the town manager training for the town assessor, that's a discussion between them and a budget conversation with the council. I'm going to turn to page two of that.
Can I just?
Yeah, sure thing.
Ask you one question, if I heard what you just said correctly, you said, "These are all cuts," and yet I look at transfers to warrant articles, if those warrant articles pass, that money does get spent this year.
So that's just moving the money from the CIP into those different funds, and then those funds are specifically identified on the warrant article. So, those aren't cuts, those are movements, and that's why they're represented in two places.
Okay, but they're not cuts.
I think they're movements from one line item to another. But they're counted, the way they're counted, it totals up to the cut total.
Well, I. I guess that's my point, is my.
That's confusing. The only, the only things that are actually transfers of funds, which don't affect the total, are the 10,000, on page two, the $10,000 and $50,000 items, line items you're seeing towards the bottom, that say, remove B&amp;G Reserve Fund from CNP and remove Land Acquisition Fund from CIP.
Right.
Those are transfers from our general fund to the CIP as reserve funds that we're designating for a specific purpose. They are, they're not affecting the bottom line.
Well, so, they're not affecting the mil rate?
Yes, correct, that's.
They are affecting the bottom line.
The focus of this whole conversation is around people don't want the tax increase, they wanted the mil rate lower. So you were right to point that out.
I guess it would be, to my opinion, it would be more transparent if, in the future, those numbers were laid out in that way. In other words, we keep calling them cuts, they're not all truly cuts.
Everything on here, other than those items, are reductions to what was proposed before.
Well, that, and we do have two increased revenue items, I want to be clear on this.
Fairly significant increases.
Yes, we have two increased revenue items, and then we have transfers, but everything else is a cut.
It's a reduction, however you want to put it, it's a reduction.
Right, and maybe we defer, we say we're going to defer it till FY23, but as Nate just mentioned, that's a decision, or excuse me, FY25, that's a decision we will make next year. Perhaps we won't do the deferred maintenance that we were.
I'm not talking about next year, I was talking simply about this year. I think, I think we're in agreement that we should call those cuts, or not, we should not call those cuts.
Those are transfers, you're right, and the.
In other words, if I say, "I'm going to remove money from my savings account so that it doesn't affect my checking account balance," that's true, it didn't affect my checking account balance, but I still spent the money.
And the warrant articles.
Just from a different place.
You're not wrong, and then the warrant articles you saw in June, those monetary figures, the $50,000 and the $10,000 were accounted for in the total CIP warrant article, I forget what article number it was in June. That was included in the total, and we're just, our lawyer has asked that we call them out separately instead of putting them in the total this year.
Can I ask, what is the, we've heard that a lot tonight.
Yeah.
Is, can you speak to, what does the attorney base her or his recommendation on? Is it what they think will make the budget pass?
This is based on changes in the Government Accounting Standards Bureau practices around assigned and unassigned balances and then designated and restricted funds. So these are changes that get handed down from that group to us on, here's, we've learned from the past and our mistakes. from the past and our, our mistakes and we think we can clarify budgets by doing it this way instead of that way. And so we are complying with the changes that they've recommended in recent years.
And we did, we did ask when this came up after the budget had failed, whether or not we could just reuse the warrants as outlined that we, that we had proposed in June, because we agree it's very confusing for people. Our attorney, and we asked if we could put it off till, those changes till next year and she really just, she really recommended against it, which is why you see the changes the way they are.
I think it's ironic that it's being done in the interest of clarity and it's causing confusion.
I agree.
There is a lot of irony, absolutely.
Okay, well, I thank you for that. My, my other question was on the presentation at the beginning of the meeting, where you asked us, Nate, not to look, in terms of the mill rate, not to strictly compare this year to, or FY twenty-four proposed versus FY twenty-three, but also to look back two years, right? And to look at FY twenty-two. And what's the difference in the proposed mill rate for twenty-four versus the mill rate, mill rate from, from twenty-two? And that's certainly one way of looking at spending, right? And it's the one we focus on, because it's the one we all have to write a check for. But in other ways, I look at the mill rate as being like the monthly car payment, right? There's a monthly car payment and there's how much the car costs. And if I'm a, if I'm a good consumer, I'm going to look at both of those numbers, right? In making my decisions. So when I look at the budget, what I'm interested in is not just the mill rate change, but there are the metric, other metrics to look at in terms of fiscal responsibility. And one would be, what is the budget this year proposed versus what was that budget two years ago? Because if memory serves, even though the mill rate didn't go up, spending did. We took money out of certain reserve accounts in order to meet that budget. So, so that, that's one thing. And the other metric that I would be interested in, and again, in the interest of transparency, would help, I think, us all to make decisions, is how has town headcount changed in the last two years? Recognizing that you may have positions that are open and not filled, but are we feeding a beast here that's growing faster than town revenues, faster than town population in terms of the number of town employees that this budget has to support?
Yep, that's a fair question and I would like to answer it. I, I, Councilor McGuire had a comment earlier, did you still want to make?
No, it's all right.
Okay. Our town population has grown a lot in the last ten years since the last census. I believe it's over, over a thousand individuals have moved to Gray as of the last count. If anything, our town staff has retracted lately, we've had people leave, because we, we aren't as competitive as private sector jobs. There's just no way for us to do that without raising everyone's taxes to a point where they, it would not be sustainable, so. But I'll let Nate speak to actual numbers, that's, that's been my impression.
I'm thinking off the top of my head and I know we converted one half-time position to a full-time position and added duties to it. We converted one full-time position to two part-time positions because we wanted to get a little bit more horsepower without having to get another full-time person on board. So that was a strategic move on our part. We are, we realigned the administrative office to convert someone who was an acting human resources director and was doing all of the work of that, but was titled as an assistant to the town manager into a human resources director. And then that area lost that position. So we actually lost a position in the clerk's office. There was a town clerk position added, created, but that office still feels understaffed and there are many needs that I would like to have been able to rely on the clerk's office for that I was not able to because of staffing there. So I would say, pretty much, there's a lot of lateral moves here. We're asking for a new position here this year to address the fact that, you know, we, we do have some capacity and growth issues that are affecting customer service. I would love to be able to stagger lunch breaks in the clerk's office like we did in the old days and things like that. But I think there's a bigger conversation to have there. And then in the public safety, we added two firefighter EMT positions because the call volume was demonstrably high. And we had a number of calls coming at the same time, so we, we were right up on it as far as staffing went to be able to cover that. And then in the buildings and grounds area, we converted a part-time to a full-time position. So we're trying to be really careful about not just jumping and, you know, into another full-time whenever we can make a gradual shift to meet the need. But, you know, on one hand, the, the cost of that is a real factor. And on the other hand, people have legitimate complaints about quality of service and we want to maintain that. One of the things that makes this job more challenging is, we have to plow the snow and we have to budget for plowing the snow not knowing what the winter's going to be like. So we have to buy all of the salt we think we might need and we have to staff all of the drivers and we have to have all of the trucks that we might need. And it's, it's hard, it's hard to do, you know, baseline budgeting on stuff like that because if, if the, the roads must get plowed, the firefighters and the EMTs must show up. And so we have to budget around worst-case scenario for that and staff for it appropriately also.
Oh, I totally agree. Budgeting is not for the faint of heart. And I think that's why a lot of people are here tonight, right? When you're, when you look at an unexpected increase in your expenses and you don't have a compensating revenue increase to pay for that, it's, it's hard for everyone.
Just another thing that I think that is kind of behind the curtain that I think frustrates all of us and ultimately all of you, is the, the, the requirements that come along with some of the funds. For instance, the state turns over certain roads to us because we've reached a certain population base and so we're now responsible for that. They give us a certain amount of money, they give us what they think it's worth to do that work, but it may not be. The stormwater system out on Main Street is a great example of that. They turned, they paved the road and turned it over to the town and said, here it's yours. The entire stormwater system needs to be replaced. We've spent the last five years basically getting the state to own up to its responsibility to do that and they've made the commitment to do that. The state recently passed an accessory dwelling unit law, whichever side of that issue you come down on, that's causing more work for the people here in Town Hall. That isn't driven necessarily by the things that are affecting us day-to-day here in town or the issues that people would like to see resolved. So a lot of the revenue that we get from other sources comes with strings attached and there's more strings now than there used to be. And so putting together a budget that doesn't increase markedly maintains what we've done in the past, but takes on that extra work that's assigned to us is part of the challenge of, of making the budget work. It's a crazy way to run a, a sys, a, a system, but it's what we have to work with. So I'm, I'm not trying to make any excuses, but there are, I've been on, I've been doing this for six years and I'm still learning stuff about municipal finances. The whole, the changes with the warrant article, I can't say what I think about that change. We're just constantly struggling to find a way to do apples-to-apples comparisons from year to year so that we can have an open, honest discussion about the budget and not have to relearn how to do the budget every, every single year that we do one. And that's one of the reasons why the council wants to take a step back and look at the whole process. And if people have ideas on how to, how they think the municipal budget will work, sign up for the newsletter, it'll come to your mail, all our agendas will come to your mailbox and when you see that workshop come back, please.
So yeah, I, I thank you for the additional answers. I think, you know, the, and I agree with what you just said. It's more challenging than ever. I, I understand the town attorney's job, but I think we could all maybe say that did us all a disservice and part of the reason we're here tonight and part of the reason we're voting on this a second time is lack of clarity oftentimes can rightly or wrongly gets read as a failure to communicate and there's, it builds a level of mistrust. And I, that's why I was disappointed to see this, this sheet, you know, termed the way it was. I really think we need to call cuts, cuts and call spending shifts, spending shifts. To, to Bob Coleman's point earlier tonight, you know, I think percentage increases are much more transparent than just raw numbers on a sheet. So room for, room for improvement in the future, but appreciate.
So I'm going to jump on the sword on that one. I use the word cuts, but the documents all say changes, so it's on me for.
If I were pitching the budget, I would call them cuts too.
So, see, I was trying to be folksy.
Thank you for your comments. I just noticed Councilor Gass had commented on the, the size increase in Gray and she said, last I checked in 2022, there were three hundred and fifty new building permits issued in Gray in the preceding five years. So that's just a reflection of the size of the town. Would anyone else like to make a comment on the budget?
Anyone else, Liz, they had two questions?
Okay, I just want to make sure no one else wants to go first before you go second.
Could I get a list of?
Yeah, be it the mic.
Could you go to the, people can't hear you online if you're, yeah.
I didn't see, I have a sheet of growth every year, the building permits. I didn't see two hundred and fifty. So could I get an updated one, please?
Um, yeah, I don't, I, I know Ann was looking into that a few, like earlier this year, so I don't know exactly where, where she got her numbers, but Nate, could we produce that?
Yeah, we, we've got some.
We've got a report.
Well, the, the question that I forgot to ask before is the skid thing.
The skid lift, yeah.
Yes, good. Was that eighty-five thousand?
Six thousand.
And is that in the budget?
No, it wasn't eighty-five thousand, it was, I don't have it right.
I can't find it in the budget anymore.
Yeah, it was six thousand. It's part of the capital improvement projects and we did retain that vehicle.
It's in the budget, the six thousand skid lift, okay. And, um, so they made the changes in the counting procedures between June and now? Is that what you're telling us?
No, they didn't make them between June and now, but nobody brought attention to it until between the two. I got involved in putting all of the material together, working with the.
Excuse me, just to point information, be it counting procedures or the warrant? Because those are two different things.
No, I'm talking about the procedures. And, and when you talked about the procedures, the accounting, the, the accounting, whatever the term is, procedures changed and you're keeping up to date with that. I can understand things changing. My question is, did they, did this change in June or change between June and now? Because if it did change in June and we put out a, a warrant that wasn't up to standards, is that what you're saying?
The, no, I'm saying that at that time, so the standards changed before June. That warrant article, you know, I, I didn't prepare that one, but I am working on preparing this one with the new finance director who was hired in July. And we asked questions of the town attorney that, you know, revealed that we wanted to change the way that we report these articles to make them more clear based on the new standards. So I certainly recognize that the change in the number of warrant articles is, is a shift from last year. The goal of that is to create clarity and I hope that going forward, it does create that clarity by pulling things out of the CIP and, and putting them into those transfers of undesigned funds into reserved funds. Makes it more clear to people what they're voting for.
My own take on this is it doesn't make it clearer and that we need to take a look at the way that we create the budget. It is true that the general accounting standards, which the municipality finance systems are supposed to use, do get updated. It was the same attorney that helped us write the articles in June, helped us write these articles now. It was her opinion, as I understand it, that, on, there were two big things. One, if, that was new to me, was that if the LD1 fails, the whole budget fails. You mentioned before, we didn't use to put all the articles beforehand. That's her interpretation of the laws that apply to us. I can't trump that.
Oh, her interpretation?
Well, any legal interpretation is just what that is until you go before a judge, right? The other thing is that every single year since I've been on the council, we have tried to write the warrant articles the exact same way so that the numbers are the same, so that each article is the same from year to year to year. And each year, because of changes in the way the accounting is done, we've had to change the order of the warrant articles. So I, I don't envision this being the last change to the way the warrant articles are written and that's just not anything unfortunately that we control. But I think there are other documents and other things that have been suggested here tonight that we can create separate from the warrant articles that will organize the information in a much clearer way.
Okay, and, and on that revenue sharing, my, my last question, and that's on revenue sharing. Two hundred homes were built this past year?
No.
No?
Councilor Gass was noting that, I believe she said, three hundred and fifty new building permits were issued in the preceding five years. It was just an indication of how much Gray has grown in the last five years.
I don't remember that number being that high. I have the list.
It's not part of our budget, it was just a comment.
Well, it is because of the revenue sharing that we got decreased. So my question is, the, the buildings that came in.
Yeah, that has to do with property values.
The, the buildings that came in this year, you know, the growth that you talked about, was any of that in the TIP districts or outside the TIP districts?
I don't have that information in front of us right now, but I, yeah, possibly.
Some of it was.
Well, it had to be, impacted our revenue sharing. So it had to be not in the TIP districts, but should have been in the TIP district is my question.
The building of new buildings is not the only thing affecting the town's valuation. It's just the value of homes, the way they're selling, the types of market that we're seeing right now is much higher than we saw even two years ago during the beginning of the pandemic. I mean, I know the value of my home estimated on all the real estate websites is a lot higher than it was, you know, every, ever landed in last year than six months ago. And the state is just trying to reflect those changes.
Okay, I got to with the three, I got phone with the three fifty, you're right. And, and I, thank you for that explanation. And basically that's all I had, thank you.
Thank you.
If, if there's one thing that makes me lose sleep at night, it's not the value of the town, it's, believe it or not, its population. When the population of Gray breaks ten thousand, we will fall under the federal clean water and stormwater acts. And that will be, that, yeah, I, I don't, to be honest with you, I don't know how we'll cope with the cost of those additional regulations. I've been pleased as punch to see our, our census stay slightly the same because we're going to have to try and figure out what those expenses will be. One of the reasons why we've put, pushed back the Main Street project is to, Main Street is a federal highway that starts here in Maine and ends in Delaware. And one of the things we're hoping to do is apply for a federal raise grant to help defer the cost of that construction. If we can land one of those grants with the help of our senators and congressional representatives, it will, it will reduce our cost to doing this project out here significantly. So we have to get further out ahead of some of these costs. We have to see these costs coming sooner than we have in the past and we have to cast the net further for sources of revenue besides just the ones that we've traditionally used in the past. Anyway, sorry, I didn't mean to share my nightmares with you, but that's, that's one of them.
Would anyone else like to make a comment?
Yeah, I found the example to get up.
Okay, take your time.
All right, Collette Wheaton, Mayberry Road. I had a post I put out there asking about the procedure on this vote on the ninth and I asked the question about absentee ballots. And then I was forwarded back and told, no, it's going to be a town meeting format and this and that. And, you know, I looked at the eight-page article. And, you know, I looked at the eight-page article for the rules, and I have some confusion there based on what you had just said. Back in two thousand, twenty twenty, the LD one failed. It was the only item that failed. It was the only item that got revoted on, and it was a whole ballot with absentee ballots, and we went to the polls.
Yeah, so.
Now why, this time around, everything?
So I think the key there was the year in which that happened, it was twenty twenty. So in our charter, if any, if any warrant articles fail in relation to the budget, we're required to have a in-person town meeting, which is what we're doing this year, to continue the conversation about. So it was not changed in the charter, but because we were under an emergency order from the state in twenty twenty, we were not. Because of COVID, we were not allowed to convene. I wasn't on council then, but it's my understanding that we were not allowed to convene a public meeting at that time, so we had to find alternate ways of voting.
But you had meetings at that time.
We had hybrid, we had, excuse me, um, remote, remote meetings. Yeah, we had remote meetings for council at the time, yeah.
Because it just seems that what's going on for this September ninth is just a mechanism to deter people from coming to vote.
That's cer- that's certainly not our intention. We are just following.
A lot of people are confused when they see the signs, and I know speak, people I've spoken to see warrant articles. They don't relate that to a budget vote, so.
Well, perhaps we need to update the signs to use more plain, the plain language.
So people understand, they don't relate a warrant to a budget.
Oh, fair enough. We, I think we could use more plain language in our signage, but, but in regards to the town meeting, we are following what our town charter says.
Because I just thought that was strange, because at the time when the LD one failed, the town council's position was, well, the town didn't know what they were voting on. They didn't understand, so we have to just re-vote on that one.
Yeah, I wasn't on the council at that time, so I'm not exactly sure about that.
I was, not all of us thought that.
Well, but that's what was pushed through.
Well, that's what, that's what a lot of people took away. Ultimately, it was voted on again, and yes, it was passed.
Three hundred people. Now, the, the initial turnout was like out of, look, roughly eight thousand population, seven thousand registered voters out of, as of last year. We had eight hundred people show up for the initial June vote.
Right.
And then everything was overturned based on three hundred people. So what's gonna happen this Saturday?
It could be fifteen people.
What if a hundred people show up, or ten?
It's just we can't, we can't control the number of people.
That's why we went, that's why most people in town.
Maybe, maybe better to go to a ballot format and more people will show up.
We, I'm cer- we, we can't, we're not allowed, so I, you, if you want to amend the charter, you certainly can propose that.
I've seen the council amend it on the fly when it's to them, so I'm just questioning, because procedurally, how are you gonna control this on that Saturday? The meeting starts at nine thirty.
That's the, that's the presentation, the actual town meeting begins at ten thirty.
Voting's gonna start. How are you going to handle, like, people coming in mid-voting?
There is.
And I haven't seen any procedures on how anything's gonna be handled.
Everyone needs to check in and ensure that they're registered to vote at, when they come in, and they're not, you, you have to be a registered voter still in order to vote for town meeting, and that will be checked just as you, it is when you go to the polls, that, there's no change.
And there's what kind of control? I mean, is, once the voting starts, does admission stop, or can people show up at any given time?
So if I, if you mind.
Yeah, go ahead, Dan, yeah.
We haven't done a town meeting in a while, so we're definitely out of practice. We've been brushing up on our rules. You're absolutely right that um, it's quite likely a smaller group of people will pass this budget, whatever the budget ends up being by the end of the meeting, um, than we had at the referendum. It's, I wasn't on the council. It was quite a while now that we've had the referendum process, and while that's only three or four or five or six hundred people out of a larger number, it's certainly better than the thirty-five that sometimes showed up at the last town meetings. The town meeting process is in the charter. It's because of the, the federal and the state emergency decrees that we couldn't have a town meeting during COVID, which is why we ended up having another referendum. That's the anomaly there. The, just to clarify, the town council can't change the charter.
I've seen it happen.
It, we can't do it. It, it, it takes, it requires a vote of the, of the people in town to make a change to the charter.
I've seen it happen on a budget issue, and it was going back, and this was around two thousand and twelve.
Well, we, that's long before any of us were in council.
Cause I was sitting over there and I saw the vote. It was a financial issue.
Well, we, we, as this, this council, this current council would never do something like that.
But I'm concerned about this Saturday, how it's gonna be controlled as far as people coming, leaving.
People will have to check in. They will be seeing, I mean, the clerks will be there. They'll have the voter registration rolls. People will have to sign in. Some of the process is quite frankly up to the town meeting. The, the council has no authority at a town meeting.
But what guidelines are being given to the moderator?
The mo- well, the ones that the, the town meeting creates at the meeting Saturday, that's Saturday.
I'm, I'm talking about control of who's in attendance.
So anyone can attend. Only people who are residents of the town can vote.
Right.
People may be taxpayers in town but may not be residents. Those people in order to vote have to receive permission from two-thirds of the people present.
Two-thirds.
So there are, there are procedural votes that will happen. Quite frankly, when we get to town meeting, I plan to make a motion that says that anyone who is a taxpayer in the town of Gray may be allowed to speak. They won't be allowed to vote, but they'll be allowed to speak. That would require two-thirds of the group to agree with that motion. If that motion passes, it means any taxpayer can come up and speak, and we don't have to stop the meeting every single time to take a two-thirds vote to see if they can.
Now, how, as far as people migrating in and out?
People can migrate in and out.
So there's no control?
There is a control because people have to identify, they'll have to check in. And if they're not a voter, basically, we'll probably use red and green cards for votes.
Cause my concern, my concern is that you, the beginning of the meeting.
They're all valid, absolutely.
You know, you could have five hundred people in that room, and then you get down to the last warrant article, and there's two people sitting there.
I mean, we, we can't control people's movements. If people, if people come in and they're registered to vote, they are allowed to stay for as long as they want.
Right, and that's my concern because it's not a ballot.
To be honest, to be honest, it's our.
And that's the concern because it's not a ballot, so.
It's our concern too, that, there's just, that's how the charter's written, so.
The one thing I will say is if you, something is very important to you at town meeting, and it's the first thing that's voted on, and that's voted in the affirmative, don't necessarily leave because someone can make a motion to undo that, and if you go away, you might find out in the papers, well, if we had a paper, you'll find out somehow later on that the thing I voted yes on that I thought was gonna go through, didn't go through because other people stuck around till the end of the meeting. It's a horse of a completely different color, and.
Yeah, right.
Do you get to have babysitters? You might as well have food trucks, boys.
It would be interesting to see if a food truck wants to come to town. We hadn't thought of that, but um, uh, no, lunch will not be provided.
For, I, I mean, we, I don't know, I, I would have to, yeah, I would have to look into whether or not we could break.
That would be something that the group would decide.
Hopefully, we won't take that long, and we won't go till lunch.
Yeah. I mean, the, the meeting could, could, the meeting could go on for five hours and then people could recess it, and we would have to meet yet another day. I mean, it is a very open-ended process, and the people who show up that day outside of state statute will have control on how the meeting runs and how long it goes. It'll be an interesting experience.
Does anyone else have comments on the budget or the process for town meeting? Oh, you do? Great, come on up. Yeah, just please state your name and address also.
Uh, my name's Tim Walperson, and I live at uh, one ninety-three Shakuroe. And I was wondering on this Article Nine, is that all co- leftover COVID money, is that?
Yeah, so the town received um, an allocation from the federal government in twenty, when, I forget, twenty twenty-one? Twenty twenty-one. We spent some of it last year, not a lot, um, and this is what was remaining.
This is, this is it for the COVID money?
Yes, that's, that's all we've got.
We're never gonna hear that word again.
No, it's never coming back, yeah.
I don't know if we're gonna hear the word again. We don't see any more money.
But we have um, the, like, the radio hardware towers?
That's for fire rescue to have, we have better access during a fire, yeah.
Right, and then uh, radio tower addition?
Yes, it became more expensive.
Yeah, so we're having.
It came?
Well.
Well, we're having a difficulty finding a proper location for the tower, and we might need to have, um, there might be an expense around either retrofitting something else in town versus using the state trooper tower. Uh, and that's just to buffer that in case we have to build something.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
Yeah.
And then the public safety radio. I just saying that, that all came to three hundred and sixty-three thousand. That was a big number.
It is, but it's actually a, a really big safety issue for fire rescue, the way they're currently set up. There's dead zones along I ninety-five where they're having to use their cell phones to communicate and also within buildings, so it's a real safety issue.
I don't remember the percentage, but even with this expenditure, we don't quite get a hundred percent coverage in town, but it increases it substantially. Right now, they have to use their cell phones.
Yeah.
And that don't get covered?
Well, it doesn't necessarily get them in touch with dispatch or connect them to the rest of the system. So yeah, it seemed a good use of that federal money.
And then I had um, down the pub, cause I'm glad you got something with the public, uh, the um, transfer station. There's fifteen thousand there for, what is that, that bump when you come out?
It's to fix the stormwater issue that they're having at the transfer station.
What is that for um, improper work, or is that something that just created over time, or?
It's a, well.
Honestly, don't know. We'd have to ask.
Say it's a design flaw, to be honest.
I would agree with that. Mo's on the um, call if we wanted to ask him. I don't know if he's available.
Cause that's why they got the grain bags there and stuff, so the water don't go in and everything.
I believe it has to do, um, yeah, with, with the.
It looks like it's just the slope of the surface on all that impervious driveway.
Mo, or, I, I know you're online, I don't know if you could speak to the transfer station drainage issue for fifteen thousand dollars?
Yeah, I would just wonder if that's where it was, cause that, that'd be nice to get that fixed.
Yep, go ahead, Mo.
So I don't have the um, article in front of me, but it's, there was uh, the MSW line for the transfer station. That's the municipal solid waste line. Is that what we're referring to?
That's, that's five thousand.
That's five thousand. There's one um, under the ARPA funds, a few lines down for the transfer station drainage at fifteen thousand. I know we had a lot of different drainage issues on the transfer station, so I couldn't recall.
Yeah, so that's the correct, that issue where the water pools up between the transfer station building and the swap shop?
Yep.
And the water ends up flowing into the building. That is to correct it.
Okay, thank you.
So that, is that something you're gonna sub out? Is that a final number? Is that someone giving you a number on that already? Or is that another number that might go up, or?
I believe we were doing most of that work in-house.
Okay, yeah, that'd be good.
I, Mo, please correct me if I'm wrong on that, but uh, but I think it's mostly supplies and, you know, the cost of that.
Y- yes, that's the, that's correct. That is intended to be done in-house.
Yeah.
And then you have like the fuel pump. The fuel pump's forty-two thousand. Is that something that's accurate, or is that?
Yes, that's based on a, a price quote we got. Uh, it's the, it's the gas pump station over there that several departments use. It just needs to be repaired.
Okay, cause I, I just seem like quite a bit. Okay, that's all I got.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? I don't see anyone online. Last call. Would any of the counselors like to say anything before we adjourn?
Thank you for coming.
Yeah, yeah, of course, thank you. Yeah, oh, and, oh, okay, yeah, we need to vote on the. Okay, I'm just gonna clo- I'm gonna just close the public hearing at eight twenty-six PM, and then we will continue with our vote of the warrants.
Thank you very much for coming.
Yes, thank you very much. We do appreciate your time and dedication and then all the feedback. Thank you. Hopefully, we'll see everyone on September ninth.
Yes.
The high school.
Bring, everyone needs to bring two, yeah, bring two voters with them. No, no.
I'm just gonna give everyone a minute to clear out before we vote.
You can stay, but you don't have to.
So the amended motion would be all of this as amended to correct warrant article enumeration.
Okay, as amended to correct warrant article enumeration? Numeration or enumerate? Um, just, I'm sorry, would, would you mind just continuing your conversation outside, cause we have to vote on, on the warrants? You're more than welcome to stay. We just can't. We wanna make sure we can hear everyone. Thank you for coming.
Yes, good night.
Okay, so I'm just looking for a motion uh, to rev- well, we're already reviewed it. For the Gray Town Council to approve the proposed warrant articles for the town meeting on September ninth, twenty twenty-three, as amended to correct the warrant article enumeration.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Uh, Dan?
Uh, yes.
Uh, Marty?
Yes.
Matthew?
Yes.
Anne?
Yes.
And I'm also a yes. Okay, now I'm looking for a motion to adjourn at uh, eight twenty-eight PM.
Second.
Matthew?
Yes.
Marty?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Anne?
Yes.
And I'm also a yes.
Good night, everyone.
Thank you for those watching and for everyone in attendance tonight.
Hope you feel better, Anne.
Yeah.
Yeah, thanks.
Feel better.
Good night.